Clerk Reed, could you please take the role?
Yes, Mayor Hagerty. Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite.
Hi.
Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Here.
Alderman Sufferton.
He's here.
Alderman Ravel. Did I hear here?
Yes, you did.
Okay, and then Alderman Rainey.
Here.
I didn't hear Alderman Sufferton, and I'm sorry, I don't see the video, I don't have my video connected. So I only count four.
He has no power. Clerk Reed, he has no power, he's on the phone.
Okay, thank you Clerk Reed. Welcome everybody to the Monday, August 10th, 2020 Evanston City Council meeting. We just had a pretty bad storm that could have been a lot worse blow through Evanston in the past hour. So I hope everyone's okay and took cover. I know that there is power out in some parts of Evanston. And as Alderman Rainey just mentioned, I believe Alderman Sufferton may be on the phone with us, but isn't here on video because of the power outage. So he's just working off of his phone right now. I also understand that Alderman Fisk will be with us as well. And Alderman Fleming may join at the very end, but something came up. So it's good to have everybody here. A couple announcements upfront. First, as we often do these days, I just want to give a quick update on the coronavirus pandemic. We have had a recent uptick in cases in Evanston. And I want to remind everyone that our fight against this pandemic is a whole of community response and recovery effort. That means it's incumbent upon each of us to do our part to contain and manage this virus until we have a vaccine and to extend to our neighbors and businesses who may be suffering financially and emotionally during this difficult time. While we have done a remarkable job as a community when you look at, you know, per capita cases and other metrics, our numbers are now trending upward. In the last week, our weekly test positivity rate has doubled in Evanston. It's still low, which is good news, but it's gone from 1.11% positivity to 2.27%. This is consistent with changes that we're seeing at the state level, where we have seen seven day moving average test positivity rates move from high threes, 3.9, to over 4% at 4.1% right now is the overall state positivity rate. In the last week, we've also seen the state numbers of daily confirmed cases just in the past week increase 15% from 1,500 cases to now over 1,700 cases. In our region, this EMS region that we're in, there continues to be an increase in positivity in new cases. This is all a good reminder to all of us that we have to redouble our efforts. In doing so, I'm asking that each of you continue to love your neighbor, wear a mask. I can't stress that enough, we know scientifically that masks make a difference, not only to keep your neighbor safe, but to keep you safe. This virus is transferable invisibly, we all know that, and those masks help keep us safe. You have to wear a mask indoors for working in Evanston. So I appreciate everybody doing that. Please remember that if you can't be six feet apart, you must wear a mask. The governor just this week gave authority to local governments such as Evanston to issue citations and fines up to $2,500 to business owners if employees or customers are not wearing masks. We're going to look to cure that issue initially, and then fines can occur. In general, all in all, I think there's decent compliance here in Evanston with our businesses, but that's not happening statewide, and so that measure was put in place. When it's not storming out like it is right now, we want everyone to be outdoors. We know that transmission of this disease outdoors is significantly less than indoors. If you have young adults or teenagers, you need to have the talk. And we know that the number of new cases is increasing significantly among young people in this state and in other states. As a whole, we know that that group, and we're talking sort of the under 40 crowd, can do a better job adopting the public health protocols that our public health experts are asking all of us. As parents, I can't stress enough that it's our responsibility to have this talk with our young folks in our home to make sure that everybody in that household unit is behaving responsibly. Be mindful of our community's safety when you return from out of state. If you can avoid traveling, please do so. We know that the infection rate in other states is rising. We know that there are a large number of asymptomatic cases, given the insidiousness of the virus. If you do travel, please follow all the CDC guidelines upon return, including as appropriate, self-isolation. I will note that all Northwestern students who are soon to arrive on campus here, whether they're living on campus or off campus, will be required to self-isolate upon their return under a Wildcat Wellness Program that the university is installing. And lastly, this is relatively new guidance from the federal government and the CDC, but it's to wear a mask indoors when a six-foot social distance cannot be met if you live in a multi-generational household, where you have seniors 65 years or older, or anyone with underlying health conditions. This is a recommendation that again is starting to get more attention in the news, and the reason for it is because of the asymptomatic nature of this. And you could have younger people in the household who don't even know they have it and transfer to a higher risk group. As a city, we will continue to monitor our numbers and consider taking further restrictive measures if the number of new cases and fatalities continue to increase. Our decisions will continue to be based on data, science, and public health experts. We will also continue to align our decisions closely with the statewide plan, including the EMS Region 10 metrics, which as I mentioned, are increasing. So I want to thank everybody for taking these extra precautions as outlined above to keep our city from relapsing into a second wave. Remember, love thy neighbor, wear a mask, please. Next up, related to the pandemic, there is a new program, and the city has put information out, I know some of our aldermen have put information out, and it's a $5,000 emergency rental assistance program. And this is using some of the coronavirus relief funds. And I want to make sure that anyone in Evanston that is having trouble with their rent is aware of this program. There is some general criteria, which I'm just going to highlight real quickly. If you live in suburban Cook County, you have to be past due status on rental payments starting March 27th, 2020 or later. You have to have a total household income before March 27th below the 80th percentile of the area median income. And your loss of income has to be due to the pandemic or stay-at-home order. And you cannot live in public housing or receive a housing choice voucher. However, if you live in designated affordable housing, you are eligible to apply. And you have not received any other COVID-19 rental assistance. So if you are struggling with your rent, and you're like, okay, I couldn't keep up with all this that the mayor just mentioned, just Google "$5,000 emergency rental assistance program", ERA, here in Illinois. It's run through the Illinois Housing Development Authority, and you can get more information. The application period started today and ends 11 days from now on August 21st, 2020. Next up, I'd like to recognize the 100th year anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment, giving women the right to vote in this country. It is such a momentous and important occasion, I am going to read the proclamation. This proclamation was put together for the League of Women Voters here in Evanston, as well as the Evanston History Center. When I finish, I know Laurie Osborne said a couple words, and Laurie was involved in recognizing this 100th anniversary. Whereas Evanston has long been at the forefront of the movement to secure women the right to vote, and many Evanston women leaders played a critical role in women's suffrage movement, including Elizabeth Boynton Harbert, Frances C. Willard, and Catherine Boa McCullough. And whereas in Evanston, there were many women organizations that worked for suffrage, beginning with the Pro and Con Club, the Local Chapters of the Woman's Christian Temperance Union, and Julia Gaston Club, and the Colored Women's Republican Club, and the Evanston Political Equality League founded in 1904. And whereas in 1891, Illinois enacted the law allowing women the right to vote for elected school offices. In Evanston, the first woman, Louise Brockaway Stanwood, elected to public office, was elected to the school board in 1892. And whereas in 1913, Illinois enacted the Presidential Suffrage Bill, which gave Illinois women the right to vote in federal and municipal elections, Evanston women were critical in the 1913 fight for partial suffrage. And whereas, on June 4th, 1919, the proposed 19th Amendment of the United States Constitution was passed by the United States Congress and sent to the states for ratification. And whereas Illinois became the first state to ratify the 19th Amendment, Evanston women were actively involved in Illinois being the first state to ratify. And whereas Illinois led the way for the necessary three-fourths of the states to ratify the 19th Amendment, which became part of the Constitution on August 26th, 1920. And whereas Evanston women were active following the ratification of the 19th Amendment to ensure that voting rights were secure for all American citizens in organizations like the Evanston League of Women Voters and many others. Now therefore, I, Stephen Howard Hagerty, Mayor of the City of Evanston, would hereby proclaim August 26th, 2020, a day to celebrate women's rights to vote and the important role Evanston played in achieving that right in the United States. With me is Laurie Osborne, who works for the Evanston History Center. And I wanted to turn over the floor to Laurie to say a few words, so welcome.
Hi, everyone. Thanks, Mayor Hagerty. Thanks to all the Evanston City Council. I'm looking at a lot of women's faces on the screen tonight of elected officials. And Evanston's had a long tradition of women's leadership in elected office and otherwise. We all know that the 19th Amendment didn't solve the problems of voting rights, and for many women, it didn't secure those rights. So the fight to secure those voting rights for women and for everyone who's an American citizen continued long after the 19th Amendment passed. But we also know that Evanston played a critical role in this fight, and so it's important to acknowledge that, to recognize the many women who were involved. If you want to know more about what we're doing locally for this commemoration of this anniversary, you can go to evanstonwomen.org. There's lots of events and things going on, starting August 18th, when the amendment was ratified, and the weeks following. There will be several talks and programs and other things. In Evanston itself, lots of things are happening, but we are going to be honoring Catherine Boa McCullough, who has a park named for her in North Evanston, with a marker on the National Votes for Women Trail. When we can all gather together, we're going to be installing a marker. If you want to see that marker, it will be on display at the Evanston History Center when we reopen on August 26th with the exhibit about Evanston women and its history for suffrage. So I want to thank the League of Women Voters of Evanston, particularly Betty Payford, who made this possible, and the proclamation tonight. And there are many other partners who were involved in planning for this anniversary, and you can find them all on that website, evanstonwomen.org. So thanks so much for letting me talk, and thanks for including this proclamation in a busy schedule I know that you have tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Laurie. And in speaking of women with deep conviction, we did have a passion since the last meeting that I just wanted to acknowledge, because it was a resident who often came before the Evanston City Council, and she had deep conviction, and she was passionate, and she was feisty, and she was also entertaining when she spoke to us. I didn't always agree with her, but I always enjoyed listening to her. And that is the passing of Madeline Dupre, who passed away recently and was, again, one of those residents who was very engaged in our city and had strong beliefs about it, and very much felt the ownership that so many people do in this town. So my condolences to her family, which includes Mitzi Gibbs, who works for the City of Evanston, who is Madeline's daughter. So our thoughts and condolences are with the Gibbs and Dupre family. We're now going to move on to city manager announcements. Erica.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I'm trying to get my technology to work, so this is pulling up on my computer as I speak to you on my phone. Let me just close that out. All right, so this evening I only have one announcement for you all. We are potentially going to be approving on the agenda this evening an expense to shore up the shoreline. And I wish I had a better way to describe it than that, but I don't. We need to do what we can to mitigate the damage that's already occurred and reduce further damage. As you know, we just had another giant storm, which I'm sure is wreaking havoc on the lakefront as we speak. But I did want to give Laura Biggs a chance to just do a quick two-slide and show about what we're proposing to do so that the council and the community have an understanding of what it is going to do and what it's not going to do, and how we hope it will help. So thank you, Laura, take it away.
Thank you, everybody. My name is Laura Biggs. ... project because it is a big expense that was not budgeted for this year. As background, we had had a lot of reventment deterioration and flooding in a lot of our parks along the shoreline. Here's a couple of photos that are reminiscent of that. We are planning on doing repairs at four of these locations. The repairs are a combination of permanent repairs to the reventment, which is the rock wall along the lakefront, and in some places, essentially a shoreline barrier system, which is a series of very large sandbags. So you can see here at this particular map, we have permanent repairs at Greenwood Beach, but also we have a temporary shoreline barrier at the dumpster launch facility. We are doing permanent reventment repairs at the south end of Elliott Park. We are installing a temporary shoreline barrier in order to alleviate some of the flooding and erosion that's occurring. And at Garden Park, we're doing a permanent reventment repair. This is what roughly a permanent reventment repair looks like. You'll notice that all of the rocks in this example picture are neatly interlocked to provide protection of the shoreline from erosion. If you've seen our shoreline recently, our rocks are not so neatly interlocked and stable. And then here is an example of what the temporary shoreline systems look like, depending on the exact model that is purchased. These sandbags are really three to five feet in height, so they will be large, and they are just stacked very closely together in, in this case, two, three, four, five deep, whatever is necessary to provide the protection against erosion. This is a table that we talked about earlier that kind of shows what we planned to do for this fall at our four location sites. The bid pricing, we had nine bidders, they came in right at the engineer's estimate for the low bidder. Where we are only doing the temporary flooding protection, it just wasn't practical because of time in order to try to even design a permanent solution. However, we will likely have to do a future solution once the lake level subside. And that's all I had to say. I'm happy to answer any questions about it, if anybody has any concerns or needs additional information.
Laurie, I have a question. So this is almost $750,000, and a lot of money at a time when, again, our revenues are down, everything else because of the pandemic. This is strictly a temporary solution, meaning that, you know, we need to come behind it with a permanent, permanent solution. If we didn't move forward and do this, or maybe this is a discussion for later on the agenda, if we didn't go forward and do this, you know, do we have any sense of what the additional cost would be to the city if we postponed this?
Well, we would anticipate that we would have additional erosion occurring and damage. Right now, the lake level is about three inches above what it was this time last year. And we typically, this is the calm part of the year, we would see it at its lowest this time of year in late summer. The storms are generally less. We had a lakefront damage event a week ago. We are having one right now. And so as the lake levels are high and we have these intense storms, we will see additional damage. Now, the permanent reventment repairs in the isolated locations, the north edge of Greenwood, Dempster Street Beach House, and Garden Park, those are permanent. And those do not need to be redone in the future unless things develop differently than we expect. But the temporary barrier solutions are being provided, because otherwise we would see substantial, we would expect to see substantial erosion of the lakefront. And also, we have buildings in both of those locations. We have beach houses that are being flooded with these events that are occurring. And so we would expect to see increasing damage to those beach houses. I do understand your concern about the unbudgeted funding. There was some cash balance that had built up in the capital fund that we're utilizing to pay for this, but it is not ideal, I understand.
All right, so, but looking at your table that you have in front of us and what you just said, so part of this is permanent and then part is just temporary. So it's probably 40% of the total cost, if I'm looking at these numbers right, is permanent, and then 60% is temporary, but to save us, it's sort of to mitigate us in the short term from additional damage?
Yes, and damage to permanent structures.
Right, plus more. Any other questions right now? Alderman Ravel.
So how heavy is one of those sandbags?
I don't know the exact weight, but very heavy. A lot of the cost, I think, of the system is actually trucking in the sand that is needed to build sandbags. And that sand can be reused once we no longer leave the sandbags. The goal is that you can just, it's clean sand, you can just cut open the sandbags and take away the material that's holding it, but it's a pretty durable material. The sandbags are expected to have a life of three to five years.
I ask just because it's amazing how powerful the lake waves are in terms of just tossing humongous boulders around that you would think would not move. So I just wonder, you know, hoping that these sandbags are heavy enough that they won't get tossed around.
This is not your typical sandbag that you would expect to see. They're pretty large, and part of the reason why we wanted to highlight that tonight is because I do expect that some people who are less than two will be a little bit surprised when they see these really large bags go into the lakefront.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn. I think Alderman Wynn had a question. She had her hand up. Looks like she's... Something's happened. I know the storm is rolling through, as it is right now. All right, so again, this item's on the agenda, so if it falls off the agenda, we'll go back to Alderman Wynn at that time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura. Erica, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That concludes my announcements.
All right, thank you. How about city clerk? Any announcements?
Yes, one quick announcement. I have Isaac Slevin on the line, who is a, who's a recent graduate of ETHS this year. He has interned in the office for the summer, but in the spring as well. He's leaving us pretty soon, but he's going to give one presentation to the council regarding public comment, continuing public participation in public comment. This is just a recommendation of the clerk's office. This is not something we have authority to decide, but we hope that there will be a reference to Rules Committee. I do know that currently, the council is continuing, as of the last Rules Committee, to allow for virtual participation in council meetings, but we do think this is something that should be a permanent facet of the way folks are able to participate in government in the modern era. So this will just take a few minutes. Isaac.
Sweet. Can everyone hear me okay?
We can, welcome.
Awesome, thank you. Let me just screen share real quick. Desktop one. Cool. Can everyone see this?
Yes. Yes.
All right. So one big issue that we found over the past few years is that there are a lot of Evanstonians who aren't able to participate at all at city council meetings. Because under current policy, if you can't physically go to the city council meeting, then there's virtually no way for you to participate in public comment. Last summer, a resolution passed that prohibited online public comment for all constituents. And the only concession it made was that constituents with disabilities are encouraged to send a family member to public comment with their statement. And that's prohibitive, especially for people with disabilities who don't have somebody who has that time to be able to go to a city council meeting. But there have been alternatives, we've already been, we already have in place. For the past two years, we've been using online signup for public comment, as you all know. And online public comment has been used pretty successfully during the coronavirus pandemic as we've been able to shift everything we would do in person to online. So that's something we can definitely be able to continue to accommodate constituents. There are five groups that this particularly impacts. First is parents. Council meetings, community events, council member office hours are almost always on weekdays and weeknights. So that means that parents with young children or people with single-parent households wouldn't be able to go to city council meetings to hear discussions and participate in public comment because they're caring for their children, or because they have young children in the home. Second is based on income. Low-income Americans are two times more likely than non-low-income Americans to begin work between 2:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. So a lot of parents aren't even off work, don't even have the opportunity to come to a city council meeting because they are working at that time. And even if they are off work, the average hourly wage for a babysitter is $16.32. So for a lot of constituents, it's completely infeasible, even if they're off work, to be able to come to a city council meeting because the cost of a babysitter is too expensive. Third is black immigrant and immigrants and people, or black indigenous and people of color, constituents of Evanston, and the immigrant community. Black and Latinx individuals are much more likely to begin work in the afternoon, evening, or night than white individuals, which means that as we consider policies that affect all constituents or certain constituents in particular, disproportionately by ethnicity and by race, certain individuals are prohibited from coming to city council meetings more than others. Fourth are individuals with physical disabilities, as I mentioned at the beginning. 44% of Americans with disabilities are reliant on other people for rides, meaning that if they live on their own or another person in their household isn't available, they, 44% of people with disabilities would be unable to physically make it to a city council meeting to share their piece or any opinion that they have on a city policy, just like anybody else who may be able-bodied. And 70% of Americans with disabilities reduce daily travel because of their disability. So that would mean that even if someone with a physical disability is physically able to make it to a city council meeting, they might not be able to, for example, because of fatigue or because of other actions they may be taking in that day, as it takes a lot more time and a lot more energy to travel for individuals with physical disabilities. And finally is people with mental health disorders. 19.1% of Americans suffer from an anxiety disorder that may make them feel intimidated, uncomfortable, or even unsafe speaking in front of city council members. speaking in front of city council members and community members. And we should take that into account when we're considering who is able to, to contribute at city council meetings, whose voices should be heard, because strong public speaking skills or an ability to be comfortable speaking in front of your elected representatives shouldn't be a prerequisite to having your opinion heard on something that the city is considering. And also because anxiety is the most common comorbid condition with autism spectrum disorder. So as we consider policy that helps all individuals regardless of intellectual disability, regardless of physical disability, we have to consider the way that mental health ability plays into that. So those are the five groups that are disproportionately affected right now by the resolution passed last summer. But there's also, finally, just to wrap up, there's a precedent for this, for proposing an ordinance or proposing a resolution that would allow individuals for the foreseeable future to be able to comment from home. Illinois Public Act 96-1473 says that any person shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the public body. So there's state law that already exists to promote cities to make sure that they provide the same services regarding public comment and city issues to people who can make it to city council meetings and city who can't. So there's already individuals who can. So there are already guidelines here. And of course, the Americans with Disabilities Act, which says that municipalities have to provide disabled individuals the same ability to access government. So yeah, basically, make sure that everybody can access city council meetings regardless of whether or not they can physically make it to a council meeting. And that's all. So thank you.
Thank you, Isaac. So just in closing, you know, one to the point is, we do hope that the council will refer this to Rules Committee to look at a permanent policy that will allow folks to participate virtually in public comment. So we're hoping that motion can be made today to examine that. And then lastly, I just want to say that Isaac is a shining example of, you know, what public schools produce, of what ETHS produces. And so we're really excited that he's, he'll be leaving the office in two weeks and going on to work on, I believe, a campaign in Montana.
Yes, in Montana, for, yeah, and a conservation organization up until the election.
Yes. So, thank you for your service. Thank you, everyone, for, for that.
Thank, thank you.
That concludes the clerk comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Clerk Reed. Thank you, Isaac, for that, for that presentation. We're now going to move to public comment. Luke, if the records are right, we have just two people tonight for public comment. We have Mike Basilko and Mary Rosink. So those will be the two speakers at public comment. These are afforded up to three minutes. And welcome. So welcome, Mike.
Thank you. First off, on the bills list, there really wasn't any conversation regarding it during APW. In general, the council continues, the council and staff, I should say, continue to spend money we don't have. On that list, two things jumped out. One, $650,000.
Maybe outside.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Mike.
Okay. One thing, two things jumped out. One was, again, the $650,000 bill for Crown Center. And then there was a $6 million, nearly a $6 million bill for a law firm, and no detail about what that money was for. So $6 million, one month, for one law firm. There should be some explanation for that. Item A8, I know you're going to be talking about it. It's the $750,000, the money you don't have, for some kind of a temporary shoreline protection. Any of the aldermen who often speak about their concerns about what you see on a lakefront, a natural lakefront, as many say, should be appalled at what the chief engineer is proposing. It's a knee-jerk reaction to something that wasn't, obviously, they didn't foresee, but should have. Nothing could look more unnatural than the images that were presented to you. It's a Band-Aid. It's an expensive Band-Aid because the lakefront conditions are just going to continue to get worse over time. So it'll be a permanent eyesore. And the money really should be postponed until a more permanent solution to lakefront protection can be developed and bid. I also wanted to speak about the budget update memo, SP2. It goes on to talk about the selling of city assets. What are those properties? What is the list? Where is it posted so people can see it? And a, and a meeting that's going to be set up to talk about this on Zoom. I mean, what's the format for that going to be? It should be an unlimited amount of time for all of citizens in Evanston to comment on the list. I mean, no one has seen this list of properties that's being sold, and we should see it. Finally, HS1. So there, there was that Human Services memorandum with some attachments. Only three attachments regarding complaints, which fairly minor. I mean, I'm not saying the accusations are minor, but all three of them apparently were dismissed as unwarranted complaints. So I'm still looking for the evidence that requires the term defunding being used against the police department. You know, I went back and I looked or tried to find whatever I could on police chief's comments regarding defunding. And I've not found anything where he says he supports defunding the police department. What he does say is that he, in what I've heard and what I've looked at, is that he'll work with a budget that he's handed by the council. So he reduces budget, obviously has to work with it. But that, that's not the same thing as supporting defunding. So I really think aldermen should stop using the chief of police as a wedge, claiming he's a supporter of defunding, because I don't think that's true. Just look at what happened in Chicago last, last night, early this morning. More rioting, more looting. We don't need that in Evanston. So I've not seen the evidence, evidence of any support for defunding the police. I don't know why we'd be penalizing the Evanston Police Department. But if you're going to reevaluate, and you should stop calling it the funding, if you're going to reevaluate their budget, you should also reevaluate the entire city's budget, all departments, reduce everybody's budget equally and proportionally. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. All right, our next, and Erica Storley, when we wrap up public comment, if you could just speak to Mike Basilko's claim about a one-time $6 million legal expense. I just want to make sure we all understand that. So we're going to turn to Mary Rosink. Welcome, Mary.
Hi, how are you? Can you hear me?
We can, yeah.
Okay, so thank you much. There's a couple of issues I have in my mind that are regarding the budget, selling of city assets, and closing of libraries again, because I really would like us to have a good budget process and because our budget reflects our priorities. I'm so concerned about the selling of the city hall and how that discussion is maybe getting out of control because we don't really have the numbers. But more importantly, if we don't have a complete pro forma analysis of the existing property and what the true costs would be if it were to be sold, and the cost that it would cost to have all our offices in other places, and the inconvenience to residents and parking tickets and all that, I fear we're going to end up with another Robert Crown fiasco, where this idea comes out that looks like it's going to be good, and it looks like it's only going to cost X, like Robert Crown is only going to cost $10 million. It was only going to be $750,000 a year towards debt. And then seven, eight, nine years later, ends up, ends up with a $50 million debt service, I mean debt, with over a $3 million a year cost. So I don't think we can afford to re, to make another mistake like that. Not that Robert Crown couldn't have happened. I just feel we should have had the stamina to say, we want something like this, we just can't afford it right now. So let's get the money in the bank and move forward with the budget that we set. So selling assets, I worry because that becomes, our, our assets are why people move to our city. Our people moving to our city provide a lot of property taxes. If we start cutting things too much, we're going to maybe end up with people not realizing that Evanston is such a fabulous place to be. My second thing is the equity in the libraries, because equity, one of the reasons for their proposing closing the North and the South Libraries, this again goes to your budget, is because it's not equitable. Well, the equity analysis, if they were going to talk about it, it would have said, don't put it at Robert Crown, because that's what the equity analysis said. Don't put it with recreation centers. Agree or not agree, I, that's one thing. But if something is really good, I would propose that equity means if it's good for one person, it's good for other people. You don't take it away from some people because some people don't have it. You find a way to make the pie bigger. You find a way to bring it to other places. One thing about libraries, and you know, I fought for these in 2010, as well as about 1,000 other people in town, was that it's one of the few places like our parks that anyone without a penny in their pocket can go and enjoy themselves, their family, and other things. It's not just a number on a piece of paper. So I hope that we will look at that carefully. Robert Crown has its own assets. I'm sure that library will be nice inside, but it's not a great location for it in terms of public, in terms of public access for other people. The parking lot, when everything's back and running, is going to be really full for people who need to go there. The other places are closer to public transportation. And my final comment is, libraries have shown time and time again, if you look up economics of libraries and business district, that for every dollar a city spends on a library in a business district, they get between $5 and $8 back because people go up to that area, and then they go to the stores, and then they stroll or they do whatever they do. But they keep the dollars, the dollars right there on, in the business district. And unfortunately for North Evanston, it'll be a bigger hit and to the city budget, because it's so easy for people to just get to Willmet, where there's no parking, and they have stores, and they have coffee shops, and they have hardware stores. So something that's very important to keep there. On the other hand, I want to say thank you so much to the street people who redid all the streets. I think they did about 11 or 12 streets. And ours was one of them. Thanks, Eleanor, for helping with that one. And they did a great job. So, that being said, please don't make any economic decisions without full pro forma numbers that can be backed up and defended and analyzed by the residents. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Mary. All right. That can, that concludes public comment. For those of you that are watching from home, I know that Alderman Wynn was on video, and now because of the storm and everything else, she's dialed in via phone. So she's still with us, but via phone. All right, Erica Storley, question for you. Hey, can you just respond to that one comment about $6 million for one month of legal costs, or something along those lines? And then also, can you give me your opinion? It looks like we have our alderman here. If we can go special orders of business first and then consent, or if you prefer consent agenda and then special orders of business tonight?
First, I know that we have some people that are dialing in by phone who will not be able to see the presentations that we have for the budget update. So it may be helpful if we do the consent agenda first and give an opportunity for those to pass, or the other members of the council to then join to be able to do the presentation.
All right. Do you want to speak to that $6 million that was raised by the first speaker? Would you rather do that when we get to the budget and you can just make the comment about it?
That sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So we'll do that, we'll do that. All right, we're going to move then to the consent agenda first this evening, and then we'll come back to the special orders of business. I know Alderman Fleming couldn't be with us. Alderman Rainey is sort of the vice chair of the Administration and Public Works Committee. So Alderman Rainey, if you could take us through CM1 and then the consent agenda. I believe you, you all did have APW this evening. So what I would suggest is, if any aldermen have certain items on the APW agenda that they want to pull off to take a minute and just announce them, so we can pull them off, and then we don't have to have you read each item like you did.
That would be good. That would be good.
Okay. So it's open to aldermen to look at the agenda and let me know if you want to pull anything off.
If we could take off A1?
A1 is off, okay.
And A10?
A10 is off, okay.
Mr. Mayor, A4 has been withdrawn by our staff for certain changes, so that's not going to be brought forward tonight. And then, as you know, the Amazon credit card, A2 is off the consent agenda.
Yep.
But those are our only two from the committee.
Okay. So if anything else that anyone wants to take off, that would also include economic and development, we've got on the agenda tonight, as well as Human Services Committee.
ED1?
ED1 is off, okay. All right, hearing, hearing nothing else. Alderman Rainey, if you want to move the consent.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda, with the exception of A1, A10, ED1, and A2, and A4.
Second.
All right, thank you. City Clerk, could you please take the role in the consent agenda?
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite? I'm sorry, did Alderman Braithwaite return?
It looks like he's on, but I don't, he's muted, and I don't hear him saying anything. But his
Alderman.
Yeah, phone, not video.
Can't hear him. But Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
Oh, okay. Alderman Sufferton?
Aye.
Sorry, Alderman Sufferton? Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
And Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
All right. Thank, thank you, Clerk Reed. The consent
I'm an aye, sorry about that.
And Braithwaite's an aye, okay. Is Alderman Sufferton with us? He's the only one that didn't vote. Okay, I'm gonna, and again, for folks that are watching, there are some technical difficulties tonight because of the storm that came through. I'm going to note the vote as eight to zero vote on the consent agenda, with Alderman Sufferton just absent from this vote because of tech issues. All right. Sorry?
Alderman Fleming's also not here, so it'll be seven.
Excuse, excuse me. Thank you. That's, thank you. Seven, seven to zero vote on that. All right. I just realized that we didn't do something at the beginning. And so I'm going to ask Kelly Garandersky, when Don Wilson just spoke, it reminded me.
All right. I, I move that we suspend the rules and can we do that non-pro-tongue to the amendment at the beginning?
Actually, with the, good evening, everybody. Actually, with the new, the new rules under the amendments, I'm not sure we even have to formally move to suspend, but I know we've been doing it out of good practice. So I think we're okay.
Okay, well, I'll move to suspend the rules then.
Second.
City Clerk, you take your role on suspending the rules then?
Yes. Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons? Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton? I'm sorry, yeah, Alderman Ravel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Clerk Reed. So on a seven to zero vote, the council voted to suspend the rules to allow for a virtual meeting like we're having.
As for good practice, should we just redo the vote on the consent agenda? Since we've now suspended the rules?
I think we're, I think city attorney Ganderzki sort of said that it was okay, that we didn't, she didn't even think we needed to do what.
Okay.
All right, so Alderman Rainey, can you take us, the items removed, yes?
Okay, so A1, this is approval of the city of Evanston bills. I believe that's the item that you, or do you want payroll and everything else off? Okay. Alderman Wilson? There are four items under A1. There's payroll, bills through the 19th, there's then the August 11th.
I'm just trying to get to the right page here.
It's the bills, I think July 6th through July 19th?
Right, so it's, it's page 66 of the packet, page 2 of 29 of the bills list.
I'm sorry, can, I'm sorry, can we just, I didn't, did we move and second it? Cause I didn't hear that before we started the discussion.
No, I, let me just do that. We haven't gotten to that yet, actually. I'm going to move approval of the city of Evanston payroll, bills and credit card activity. Our staff is recommending that for the period of July 6, 2020 through July 19 in the amount of $2,838,102.11 bills list for August 11, 2020 in the amount of $7,328,482.67 and credit card activity for the period ending May 26, 2020 in the amount of $2,011,195.38. I move approval.
Second.
Okay, now this is open for discussion.
Yes, it is.
So Department 14, the city clerk's office, we had a conversation a couple, few weeks ago about the hiring of outside consultants without approval from the either HR or the manager's office. And I see there's yet another invoice here, notwithstanding that conversation. So I'd like to move that we remove this invoice from the bills list and proceed without this invoice.
Second.
Second.
May I have Ms. Storley or Ms. Ganderzki, if someone is available to answer a question on this? Ms. Storley, are you available?
I think she's, I think, I mean, she's on, so I'd go ahead, Clerk Reed.
Okay, was there a, in the hiring of this fellow, was, was there a rule or a policy broken?
It's been my understanding for many years that the only person that can hire or fire is employees. So if you had come to me and asked me if you could hire this person and we had a conversation, then that could have been one outcome. But I have not received any request from you to this point to hire anybody.
So to be clear, so staff members or any department head, which, you know, the clerk isn't actually a department. The clerk's office isn't a department under the code. But any department head, similar to the clerk, has the ability to make purchases up to $25,000. I believe that is without council approval. Or authorized purchases up to $25,000 without council approval?
Accurate.
And this purchase is under $25,000, correct?
It's not a purchase. It's an aggregate amount, so if there was any. Play to the same vendor, if the total, the amounts paid to the person is over 1,000. This is, this is not a purchase of a, of a, of a goods or service. That's what the city council approves over.
Okay, so then as far as then retaining a consultant or a fellow, this is, this is an intern, he's just filled out a 1099, that's, that's what's different here. So retaining a consultant or a cert, or a service, does that have the same rules? As far as the authorization up to $20,000?
I don't understand what you're getting at.
Well, what I'm getting at is that there is no, you know, hiring violation, there's no rule broken. As the clerk, as a, having the authority of a department head, I independently, and not under the direction of the city manager, I have the independent authority to make purchasing decisions for the clerk's office's budget.
Well, I don't know.
Right, because the city code gives the city manager discretion over the city's departments. And then the city code expressly lists all of the city's departments and it does not list the clerk's office as a city department. The clerk is an elected official who is elected to head the clerk's office. It is not a department that is headed by the city manager. And so, you know, I, I, I don't think it's very clear here. And I think if, if anything, we should be getting to a clear understanding, maybe Ms. Ganderzki can weigh in on this. You know, what the authority of the clerk is because it's very clear that the clerk's office is not under the auspices of the city manager, as it is expressly not listed there in the code. So then independently, the clerk has that same authority to, to make these kinds of decisions.
Well, the corporate authorities are the city council and the city council has approval over all expenses of the city. So yes, the city clerk's office has a budget, but it's the city council's approval of.
Certainly.
That is the question here. And the others.
Well, I just want to chime in very quickly to that point. Because this is, like you said, the clerk's office does have that. And yes, the council is the corporate authorities and so thereby they approve all bills of the city and all payments by the city. I did not, we should make it clear that there wasn't a rule violation by hiring this, in, in contracting this service. And that's the, what the argument that's being made here is that the clerk's office violated some kind of rule or some kind of practice, which I just want to make it clear that there is no hard and fast clear rule that was broken by the clerk's office with retaining this person.
I'm not going to opine on whether or not a rule was broken. I know that direction was given and it was not followed. I know that we have a hiring freeze and I've told our entire city staff that they are not to hire anybody and not to have any expenses that aren't authorized by me because we're laying people off and we're in this pandemic and we have a serious budget shortfall. So whether or not, you know, rules were broken, I can't opine on that right now. But there was, well.
So are you saying that the city manager has the authority to direct the city clerk?
I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is if somebody is going to be paid by the city of Evanston as an employee or as a contractor, that typically gets approved by the city manager.
Right, that typically gets approved by the city manager. So I just, I do want to make clear, I know you're unwilling to or maybe unable to at this time without further looking into it to opine on whether or not a clear rule was broken. I do get that you, that there is direction for staff not to hire any new permanent employees. There are no permanent employees hired in the clerk's office. There was an intern who was scheduled to, a fellow who was scheduled to start, you know, right before the pandemic started. That person was, you know, retained in an alternative manner. There wasn't a rule broken. The clerk's office has this authority. So what the council is really doing isn't, you, you, you're just, it's, it has to be political. I mean, I can't, I can't find an explanation for it because this is, again, this is a purchase that in aggregate for a summer fellow is under $10,000. Again, that money was in the clerk's office's budget to hire seasonal folks and, and that, that has been done. I do understand that we are in a pandemic, but there's still work that the clerk's office has to do. I do not have staff as the mayor has made an executive order with, to take staff out of the clerk's office. This deputy city clerk, this is the way that we in the clerk's office have been able to continue the work that we were elected to do.
Well, we've got some, we've got some discussion, it looks like, with some council members. And I guess I do have a question. I didn't know I have the ability to issue any executive orders. I've never issued an executive order since I've been in office. But if I have that ability, I would love to know from our city attorney or city manager sometime. But we've got Alderman Fisk and then Alderman Wilson.
Only under emergency situation can the mayor issue an executive order if there's emergency declaration. That's the only time the mayor has the authority to issue.
Alderman Fisk.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm, I'm really confused and Clerk Reed, I absolutely agree with you. This, this is not a political issue. I, I'm trying to figure out what's happened. I mean, I saw an email from someone who claimed to be an assistant to the city clerk, which indicated an employee. And I think we draw a distinction unless I'm mistaken and the city attorney can correct me on this, but I think we draw a distinction between goods and services and employees. And going back to last year, before city manager Bob Kowitza, I thought it was clearly stated that all employees would be under the hiring of the city manager, not of any individual person who was, and that this, this did not go through the human services department. So, I mean, you can just correct me if I'm wrong. I'm, I'm going on my memory of these conversations that we've had over the past year and emails that have gone back and forth. That my understanding was that, that the person was informed that he was not an employee. And I think we discussed a little bit of this last week. And it was also reiterated that the city manager had the authority to, to hire employees and that there was a hiring freeze in place as well. So this is, this is, I think Clerk Reed, I mean, you're, you're.
If I can answer your questions there?
Let me finish because I got.
Okay, certainly.
I think you're, you're confusing things. And I want to make sure that there is no confusion out there for the public. Again, this is not a political issue. It's just simply a, 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 a policy that I think the council has already looked at and agreed to or understood. And now it seems to, it seems that you're wanting to change it by calling the hiring of someone or the employment of someone a good or goods or service, which I absolutely disagree with. So I'd like some clarification from corporation council on this. Again, I think that would be helpful to the council. And yeah, someone can please straighten this out. I, I, I really am very concerned about persons who are not employees handling sensitive information and what their responsibility is when, as an employee, there is some control over, over how information is handled. I'm not sure an outside contractor, if that's the way you're going to try to describe this person or persons in this, you know, particular position. I'm not sure that we have the same ability to have them handling sensitive information that we would in other cases. I, I'm just absolutely confused about this. I think we're heading down the wrong road, but I really want clarification.
Sure, I, I, I'd like to opine on that. As far as clarification, there, there is a refrain that occurs.
From the corporate, I said from the corporation council. That's who I want clarification from.
Well, there, there are direct points to the situation here that I need to address. And one is about the sensitive information. I, I keep hearing that refrain, there's no sensitive information that this employee handles. So I, I don't know why that refrain is repeated. Secondly, to the clerk's office and hiring of employees. You know, again, I do think corporation council should opine on this. Corporation council should look to the code to see the, what is under the auspices of the city manager's authority and office. And then, then see what isn't. And what the city corporation council will see is that the clerk's office is not listed there. And so, you know, even if I conceded the point, which I do not, if I did concede the point that the city manager has the authority to hire and fire employees, again, this person is a 1099, was, was, was registered as a 1099 contractor with the city, which is the same registration that an intern or a fellow who is not a direct employee would receive. So thereby, even if that was the case, the city manager had authority to hire and fire employees, this person is not an employee directly of the corporation.
I'd like to have an opportunity to speak.
Go ahead, Alderman Nguyen.
Yes, I am not going to support this payment. I supported the last payment at the last six council meetings. I have since learned that the person being paid here was aware that the, our human resources department had advised the clerk that he should not be hired. I'm aware of that the last time. At this point, this person who did the work knew that he was not supposed to be hired. We have so many people in our, in the city of Evanston who are doing more than their fair share of work because we have a hiring freeze right now that I cannot support hiring, and this is hiring somebody else. So I will, I will not support payment.
Did, did we hire folks for the mayor's summer youth employment program even through the hiring freeze? That was a pre-scheduled program. Did the city hire folks, young folks, just like this young man, college students during the hiring freeze? Someone answer that question, yes or no?
Mr. Mayor, I would ask you to take control over the conversation here so that people can speak in order.
Thank you, all right, we're going to go, we're going to go to Ms. Ganderzki, city attorney.
Evening, everybody, city council members, Mayor, Clerk Reed. I think when, in examining this issue, we have to look at sections of the Evanston municipal code being under the clerk's duties 1-7-2G, which states that the compensation allowed to the city clerk is considered full compensation for the clerk's duties. So in examining what the payment is for, we have to, I think, ask, is this a continuation of the clerk's duties? And if it is, 1-7-2G would seem to answer that the clerk's compensation of his yearly salary would cover any and all expenditures with regard to clerk duties. But then if you also go to 1-17-1.
Ms. Ganderzki, can I, that's, that's.
Let's let the city attorney, let's let the city attorney finish.
Well, that's ridiculous. I mean, we have deputy clerks, we've had multiple deputy clerks for years. So to make an argument that the clerk's salary is the full compensation, that's just, that's almost irresponsible. That's, that's a fallacy, that's false. Everything, the code also says that the clerk, that the city manager is to provide the clerk with any clerical assistance that they need. So obviously that wouldn't mean that the clerk's compensation means that the clerk is responsible for every single task in the office and can, can't hire anyone or have any assistance. Is that what you're trying to say? Cause that's what the, what it sounds like.
Well, let's let, let's let the city, let's let the city attorney finish.
So the second.
Point number one.
The second code, section 1-17-1 under goods and services, the city manager and or his or her designee may allow expenditures for goods and services $25,000 or below. So it would seem to me that unless the city manager designated that purchase or that allowance, it isn't allowed. And typically for contracted services, especially in aggregated amount where it could extend beyond $25,000, even in a given month, it's probably the best practice to bid that out under an RFT so that the city council can examine that and that the public can have advanced prior notice because you might have multiple people that want to bid for the same type of project or assistance depending upon what the project, the goods or the services is. I'm not sure if we're talking about an employee or a quasi-employee or a paid intern, if that falls under good. falls under goods and services. I don't think that's what the code intended. So examining one dash seventeen dash one, I think the city manager would have to approve the expenditure, anything $25,000 or below. City council would have to approve anything above that. And one dash seven dash two G seems to account for the clerk's compensation under the clerk's duties.
Thank you. We've got, we've got Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can we just move this to a vote? I think we debated it enough. Are we?
Alderman, Alderman Wilson, when you started, you, you said there were four things. This is just the first. Do you want to put an amendment then?
I, my, I did make a motion to take this out of the bills list and, you know, and just, just to be, you know, a hundred percent clear, we talked about this particular, whether you want to call the person a contractor employee, whatever it is. The person and the clerk was, were told by HR back in March on at least two occasions that there was no authority to hire the person. Last time it came up because the person had done a bunch of work and that work was already done and went ahead and voted for that. Now, between now and then, it seems that more work has been done, but I thought it was pretty clear that I was uncomfortable and I think maybe I can remember whether people expressed it or not, but even the actual work being done, I, at the time, I questioned whether that was within the scope of the clerk's responsibilities. And, you know, when I saw the work product before, you know, for example, there was a memo about changing the name of the mayor's youth employment program. So, you know, why would we pay somebody to write a memo about changing the name of the mayor's youth employment program and things like that? So I'm still not comfortable with this. I haven't seen the work product, but at the same time, the threshold question is there wasn't authority to hire the person. So my motion is I want to amend the bills list to take this item off the bills list.
Second.
Without this item. So that's my motion.
Second. All right. City clerk, you take the role, please.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wayne.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton. All right, okay. Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
And Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
I said, did we approve the bills list without that item?
Second. Okay, so on seven to zero vote, the bills list was amended to remove the item on the independent contractor in the clerk's office. Alderman.
Can I have a, I have a question also, and I don't know what, can you all, I have a question. What would be the next step for this to, because it seems unsettled even still from this conversation? What is next and who has the final understanding of the clerk's office, his authority, his threshold?
I think we've talked about that a lot. So I mean, it's clear that, just like I don't have authority to go out and hire a personal assistant, I don't have that authority. I'd love to see a person.
Shoot, I, I would get in that line also, and I don't want to open that can of worms, but I think we all would.
Excuse me, if I can just, Alderman Ruth Simmons, to your question, the, the, it isn't clear here because what we did clearly hear, you know, Ms. Story say is that she is unclear whether a rule was broken, right? And, and we also hear Ms. Ganderzki, you know, she hasn't made a legal determination on this. It seems as though from what we saw that on the fly, she looked at a few pieces of code to affirm what may be a belief, but it's not a confirmed belief. And it seems as though the members of the council who are holding this item are holding it because they're uncomfortable because they think some rule has been broken or some policy has not been followed.
Oh, I'm not.
It's just not yet clear.
All I want, clerk and, and colleagues is just if, if I, I'm sorry, if I missed the final response because I heard some uncertainty from the city manager, I'm not sure I heard a definite response from the attorney. I don't know if you all can even hear me or not. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, and to that point, I know that I can't hire anyone. I can't, you know, submit an invoice. I don't have a budget, but I understand that I'm also not in the clerk's office that has a budget. So I understand that he has a budget because we approved it in our last budget season. And has he exhausted the budget that we approved? Is this outside of his authority for the budget that he has to work with? Those are some of the questions that I would just like answers to, but I can't support it with the dialogue that we've had just now.
And if I could respond, Alderman Simmons, and I'm sorry if I, so.
Go ahead, Alderman, then I'm going to go to Alderman Rainey.
Thank you. And, and this is just for the, for the public because I get frustrated not with the clerk necessarily, but situations like this when people tune in, they don't understand. And then it's almost like we're making a mockery of what we do. And so the point of information and Alderman Simmons is correct, we don't hire anyone. We can't go out and find someone to assist us in what they do, what we do. We don't. First, people are vetted through our HR department, their background checked, they're sometimes drug tested, there's a whole policy and procedure and past president that dictates what we do as a city council. So clerk, with all due respect, no one that I've known in the past 10 years has gone out and hired anyone. They just, they, they haven't. And I think if you wanted to, you've received emails and notification from our staff how to do so in the proper way. And I think that's all that everyone's trying to protect right now.
Right. If I may respond to that, the, the thing that isn't clear is if anything improper was done. I get that people are trying to protect.
You, you, you continue to, to miss the point and that is it hasn't been done before, Clerk Reed. It hasn't been done before. No one on our city council, no, I'll speak for myself, in the past 10 years, and there are a lot of issues that I could, that I would love to have help and paid staff for. And the, and the reality is we just don't have that opportunity. And if you want to do it in the future, then you write up a job description, you put it in our HR department's hand to vet it, and then you have an open application process just like every other position. And it's, it's, it's that simple. And now we're at, I, I don't know how many times, how many minutes we've absorbed doing this, but I really want to move on in the agenda. I got a ton of things to get done tonight.
Alderman, Alderman Rainey.
Thank you.
Very, very quickly, what I would like to have for our next meeting, so that we don't have this conversation again, is I would like a report from Human Resources as to what the procedure is for the clerk, not anybody else, but for the clerk because that seems to be a special case. How the clerk would in fact get an intern or an assistant in addition to a deputy clerk legitimately? What, what is the process? Secondly, I'd like a report from Hertesh or the accounting department on what is the balance of his budget and what is remaining to be spent by him for, for expenditures such as an assistant or an intern, et cetera. Very clear, very simple, that's what I want. And I would like it shared with everybody.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk.
I'm, I'm fine with that. Thank you.
All right, then we're gonna, so the vote was to amend and remove the expense from the clerk's office on a seven to zero vote. It had been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Any other discussion about the minute, excuse me, about the, about payroll or bills?
Did we, did we vote on the whole thing yet?
No.
No.
Okay, so it was moved, it was seconded. Could we take the roll, City Clerk on A1, approval of the city of Evanston Payrolls, Bills and Credit Card?
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wayne.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton. I'm sorry, Alderman Ravel.
She was an aye.
I did not hear it. I'm sorry.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
All right, so A1 passes the Evanston City Council on a seven to zero vote. Alderman Rainey, can you introduce?
Yes. A, A4 was removed by staff, that's the CDW purchase for, for their work. A10.
How about eight, yeah, and we got to do A2, the Amazon bill?
Oh, A2, the Amazon one, yes. A2. I move approval of, oh God, where is that? It's at the end here. Why is it at the end? I was going to move that last. A2. A2, let's see. A2, it's 110,000, where is it? Okay, A2. One second. I'm looking for it. A2. Approval of BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity in the amount of $10,827.13. I move approval.
All right, seeing no discussion, City Clerk, you take the roll on A2.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wayne.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton. Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
All right, thank, thank you, clerk. A2 passes the Evanston City Council on a seven to zero vote. As Alderman Rainey mentioned, A4 was withdrawn at the committee. We're going to now move to A10.
All right. A10. Staff is seeking direction from the council regarding whether or not the city of Evanston should be signatories in an amicus jury brief, friend of the court brief, in support of the city of Philadelphia in a case before the U.S. Supreme Court, having to do with not doing business with a religious social service agency that refuses to, to provide for the ability of gay couples to have, to do foster parenting. I move approval.
Second.
Okay. Alderman Fisk.
Yeah, I asked for this to come off just because I want to understand how, how do we, how are we notified or requested to participate in amicus briefs and who, who requested it?
We had this conversation and Nicholas can answer that, or I guess Kelly's here now. She can answer.
Hi, good evening. Once again, we were approached by a group that's, a group of city attorneys essentially that had banded together in support of the city of Philadelphia. The city of New York is actually leading the charge on this. And I had received correspondence from the city of New York requesting our support on this.
And, and can you tell me how much it will cost for us to do whatever we need to do?
It won't cost anything.
Okay.
Alderman Wilson.
And in case it's not obvious, it's important because it is in front of the Supreme Court. So if it, if the decision was one way or the other, it would be binding on cities such as ours. And I think our community standards are important enough to, to be willing to take a stand on this with the other city.
All right, seeing no more, seeing, thank you. Seeing no more discussion, Clerk Reed, you can take the roll on A10.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wayne.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
And Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
All right, A10, the city of Evanston joining the amicus brief in Fulton versus the city of Philadelphia, pass the Evanston City Council on a seven to zero vote. We're now going to move to the last item removed with the consent agenda. Alderman Wilson, could you introduce that, ED1?
This is an approval of entrepreneurship emergency assistance grants. The economic development staff is recommending city council approve financial assistance through the entrepreneurship support program for the following applicants. Featherson Realty for $2,500, Life in Progress for $1,779.96, and Minoshik, and I never know if I'm turning asking that right, so somebody tell me if I got that wrong. Minoshik Boutique at $2,500. I move approval.
Second.
This is open for conversation. Okay.
Can you argue me?
We can.
Yeah.
Okay. I have to recuse myself. One of the applicants is a commercial tenant of mine, but I just want to say I'm excited to see different types of businesses in town applying for this grant and really grateful for the support that we had on MWEBE to continue providing this opportunity for the small business community. And I hope more apply.
Thank you.
Second, I agree with that.
All right, so let's go ahead then and take, take a vote when you get this money out. Clerk Reed, can you take the roll on ED1? You can't hear Clerk Reed if you're speaking.
His line is muted.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wayne.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
I'm, I'm recusing myself. Minoshik is a tenant.
Yes. Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
And Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
All right, ED1, ED1, approval of entrepreneurship emergency assistance grants passes the Evanston City Council on a six to zero vote with Alderman Ruth Simmons recusing herself. We're now going to move to the special orders of business, which we passed over at the beginning of this. So we have three items on our special orders of business tonight. Alderman Rainey, could you move the first item?
Yes, sir. The first item is approval of $70,000 of CDBG CV funding for a COVID-19 micro enterprise assistance program. Our staff is recommending the council approve of CARES Act Community Development Block Grant, CDBG CV, funding to establish a micro enterprise assistance program for Evanston low and moderate income micro businesses to help mitigate the economic impact of COVID-19 by providing critical financial support and technical assistance. The city received $1,080,243 in CARES Act CDBG CV funding. $150,000 was proposed for economic development activities in the CARES Act budget. Funding in the amount of $70,000 is requested for this low moderate income micro enterprise grant program. If approved, $80,000 would remain for additional economic development activities. I move approval.
Second.
Second.
Could I speak to one minor point here? This is so unreasonable, Mr. Mayor. The funds, here is a warning from HUD. The funds must be expended. These minuscule funds must be expended by June 15, 2026. There will be two city councils by that time. We can spend this money in one month. Just saying.
You know, the irony, the irony of that, Alderman Rainey.
What?
The irony, the, Sarah Flax knows the irony, but the irony is after these major disasters where billions of dollars of CDBG money come in, they literally need to be like spent in two years. And they're like, we can't rebuild the city in two years. And here, and here we are. I was shocked by that date, actually. All right, any, any other comments on this item?
I was hoping she made a mistake, but Sarah never makes.
I thought so too. I thought so too, actually, but.
One comment, if I may?
Yeah.
That is for all of our CDBG CV, so we're just letting everybody know. But it is kind of silly because obviously we have no intention of waiting that long. But good news, the regulations finally came out this afternoon, so we'll be bringing you more stuff that we absolutely expect will be spent well before. you more stuff that we absolutely expect will be spent well before the deadline.
Excellent, excellent.
Great.
Thank you, thank you.
Good, all right, single.
You're doing a fabulous job, Sarah, really. This is, this is great.
Seeing no more conversation. Uh, City Clerk, you take the role on SB1.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Berthwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wen.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
And Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
All right, thank you Clerk. SB1, approval of 70,000 of CDBG CV funding for COVID-19 micro enterprise assistance program passes the Evanston City Council on a seven to zero vote. Uh, we're now gonna move to SP2. Alderman Rainey, could you just introduce this for discussion?
Yes, yes. Uh, SP2, our staff is going to give us a 2020 budget update. Um, we're gonna have a discussion. I move approval.
Second?
Second.
All right, so this is open for discussion. I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, interim city manager, Storley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first, I had a chance to look at the, um, the, what was described in the public comment as a $6 million expense out of legal. Um, it's not accurate, uh, that the, uh, expense that's being referred to is actually the total for the bills list. Um, that's on the last, the, the legal expenses are on the last page of the bills list, and then there's a total, um, below the expenses from the legal, or from, from the risk, or from the insurance fund. Uh, so that total was 5.7 million. That's the total of the bills list. There was another $100,000 in wire transfers and then, um, sorry, $100,000 in advance checks and then 1.4 million dollars in wire transfers. And that is how we got to the $7 million, uh, complete and total bills list expense. So, uh, no, no expenses, uh, for legal fees of $6 million. That was just the total of the entire, um, bills list that came out prior checks.
Thank you for that, Clerk, for this, thank you.
And then I also wanted to note before we start the budget discussion, um, just a reminder, Hitesh, to give everybody an update on, on the bond sale was held today, and we got some very good rates. Uh, and so that's a reason to be very enthusiastic about some great rates that we got. So, Hitesh, I'll let you upon that before we start the presentation.
Okay. Uh, thank you, totally. Good evening, Mayor and the members of the committee. Let's see if I can start my video. Who stopped it? Again. Hey. Okay, so here I am. So, yeah, I mean, before we get into the budget thing, uh, we had the bond sale today. It went very well. We had a six bidders and who kind of submitted like almost over 20 different bids, you know? And we came out with the rate of what we call a true interest cost of 1.53%. So, which is very low. Uh, couple of big numbers are, we had got the re-offering premium of almost $3.3 million. And we had a refunding of the 2010A and 2011A bonds, and we generated $2.3 million in that refunding savings. So that would be a big help in reducing a tax levy for this year and the next year. So that's the good news overall, yeah. I mean, positive response and the winning bidder, yeah. Uh, they wanted to have the Evanston bond, so they bid it nine times to bid all others. So we were glad to get that kind of rate.
I'd just say, Hitesh, I mean, that is great news. I just want to make sure everybody understands it means that people want the debt of this city. So despite, you know, the challenges we have and the, the financial condition that we face that other cities are facing right now too, they want to own, you know, a, a piece of Evanston through, through the debt that we sell. And so that, that's just a really, I think it speaks highly of the work, Hitesh, that you and the city manager's office and everybody here is doing. So I just wanted to highlight that, thank you.
Okay, now moving on to the budget update, uh, we have, again, just like the last time, brief presentation, uh, where we go over the revenues and loss, the expenses and the COVID-19. So let's see, Katie, you have the presentation, we can, okay, can you please share? Okay, so this is 2020 budget update, uh, let's go to the next screen. Uh, as I mentioned, it's like a three dif, main parts, budget projections and actuals for the revenue, COVID-19 grant subject, and the third thing, as we have already started the 2020 budget planning. And we had few meetings with the departments and some of the more meetings are kind of scheduled in the next weeks. Let's move to the next one. Okay, so we pretty much stay where we were when we reported the last time, right around $12 million shortfall, uh, which is kind of roughly 10% of our general fund budget. Uh, we had the expense reductions of 8.3 million. And one thing which has been added from the last time is the grant revenue. The Cook County, out of their CARES funding, uh, they have kind of allocated $619,000. So you just approved, I think, the city council about the intergovernmental agreement, so we have to have that agreement filed with them and we have to have the expenses, uh, kind of submitted to them, uh, to get, it's on a reimbursement basis, but that's a good thing. Um, we had a budgeted surplus of 1.6 million, so that would help a long way. Um, we never knew about it when we did it, but I really, uh, kind of commend the council for that. Um, and then finally, our projected year in deficit, after you take care of those 8.3 million reductions, the grant revenues and 1.6 million budgeted surplus, we would expect right now to be left with around 2.1 million in deficit. Um, projected year and fund balance even after that, at 13.2, because we ended the 2019 on a very strong note where we added over a $2 million surplus. So we are over $15 million in the fund balance right now in general fund. So this year, 13.2 million even after 2.1 million deficit.
Oh, Hitesh, I just want to clear on this slide. So you're saying that if we can't close the 2.1 million in the next, you know, five months that remain in this, and that comes out of our, uh, you know, rainy day fund, so to speak, the, the reserve, it brings the reserve down at the end of the year to 3.2 million? Okay.
Correct.
What about the news today that the Big Ten football is not going to be played? So that was big news that came out.
Right, and we.
Obviously to generate a lot of revenue, um, from football. So can you talk to us a little about that? And is that factored into your 2020 projected revenue shortfall above 12 million?
Yes, Mayor, absolutely. And I think it's, uh, we have mentioned that in the next slide, again, we have, don't have the official word. I keep on hearing whether it's canceled or postponed. I was reading on CNN right now, they say it's postponed. So, and they said they haven't taken the word, the Big Ten and Big 12 and the conferences. So we will wait until, but yes, even if they decide to cancel the whole season, we won't have any adverse effect on the numbers because we have already accounted for that.
Okay.
Okay, so moving along, Kate, can you please? Okay, so cash and investment, one of the whole things, you know, we have to pay the bills, we have to pay the employees, we have to pay the vendors. Uh, overall cash balance, it's still kind of at 63 million, so it's not bad, you know? And some of the major funds, general fund with over $3 million, CIP fund over 9 million, and water sewer fund combined over 11 million. Besides that, I mentioned last time too, we have a line of credit available of $15 million from Byline Bank in case we need it. I hope I don't have to use a dime until the year end, but we still keep it as in case we need that. Uh, moving along to the next one, this is kind of the revenue side. Um, as of June, we have around $52 million in the revenue, uh, for the general fund. Property tax obviously is a big one. We got, uh, first installment pretty much at par with the last year, so that has helped us in cash flow and the revenues. Um, 2026 month budgeted revenue was 57, so obviously, yeah, compared to that, we are short there by around 5.7 million or 10% of that. And we continue to track that, whether that number's kind of consistent with what we have given you in the earlier council meeting. Uh, 2019 six month revenue was $60 million. So that's, yeah, even a bigger gap, uh, you know, around $8 million. But yes, we kind of expected that and we will continue to kind of monitor this very closely. Some of those numbers come kind of three months late, big numbers, sales tax and home rule tax, which is a big revenue, there's a three month gap, so, but we continue to look at those numbers and follow those down.
Hitesh, I'm, can, can you get that? Keep that slide up that you were just on? So is the 2026 month budgeted revenue, the, the, the second bullet, was that after the pandemic, what you put the budgeted revenue at? Or was that what was in 2020 budget? And I'm just curious, so the 2020 budget was budgeted to be lower in revenue than what we took in in 2019 during that same period?
Correct, yes. And sometimes some of the big revenues, we definitely look at it like, uh, when it could change from a year to year by a couple of million, up or down, realistically.
Interesting, I mean, even without the pandemic, you're saying that six month budgeted revenue year over year was gonna be down 3 million bucks?
Right, and so, yes, this is the budget which the council adopted last year, pre-COVID, yes, in November.
All right.
So 5.7 million lost compared to a budgeted revenue for 2020.
Got it.
Okay. Uh, moving along, this is just a graph, we added kind of a sales text, um, how we doing, uh, so obviously you see the January and February, we were higher, the red line is the current year, 2020, um, dotted blue line, 2019. So there was no impact in the first couple of months. March, we kind of pretty much even because the first 10, 15 is pretty normal. And then you see that, uh, we are kind of losing the money in April and May. The last data we have is for May, right now. Um, the next one is, uh, income tax, that's the big one. Um, and particularly you would see right up the back, if you look at the chart, the month of April, uh, generally, that is the month when we get the bulk of the revenues. Um, obviously, we got only half of that. Now, is that the impact of the unemployment, the, you know, the closure of the restaurants and retail? At the same time, the IRL had extended the deadline up to July. So we see that how much of that we recover in the subsequent months, you know? Uh, so we'll wait for the July data to come for the income tax and we will see whether we have recovered any of the lost revenue in the month of April. Um, June year-to-date revenue, this is more like our home rule taxes, um, recreation program fees, obviously, lot less, parking tickets have been affected, hotel tax is one of the big one, and amusement, you see, yeah. So these are the revenues which have been impacted greatly by the COVID-19.
Hold there for just one sec.
Sure.
Hold there for just one second, I want people to have a chance to see that. So interestingly, I would have thought hotel taxes would have been down lower, lower than they are. Um, parking tickets, obviously, way, way down and, um, and then recreation, that makes sense, and amusement, yeah, way off. Although I would have thought, oh, this is just for the month of June that you're showing, okay? I see.
Year-to-date for the June.
Oh, this is year to, this is year-to-date through June?
Year-to-date.
Yeah, yeah.
And one of the things in the hotel tax could be that we received that, uh, pending from Margarita Inn.
Hmm.
Years, so we got some of those money for the parking tax and all that. So I'd like to see whether it's booked in June or July, but that could be one of the reasons, um, of our hotel tax.
Okay.
Okay.
Alderman Rainey has something.
Sure.
You're muted, Anne, you're muted. You're unmute. We can't hear you.
Are your presentations going to be online so that we can?
Yeah, we will post it after we are.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Next one, please, Kate. Okay, so we are moving on to the expenses, um, and how we're doing. I would ask, request that Kate Lewis-Laken, our budget coordinator, to kind of go through this portion of the budget presentation, please.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, Kate Lewis-Laken, budget coordinator. Uh, so just to talk through the expenses a little bit and where we are year-to-date, uh, for 2020 at this point. So our year-to-date expenses in the general fund right now are 54.8 million. Um, when we compare that to our budgeted number, that was 57.1 million that we would expect to get to at the six month budget. And again, that's, that's sort of pre-COVID based on our 2020 adapted budget. So the savings we're currently seeing, uh, year-to-date on the budget in the general fund are $2.3 million. Um, you can sort of compare that back to, uh, our slides on the revenue and see that we, we do see some savings on the expenses, but, um, our, our losses of revenue are of course outpacing our, our expense savings even at this point. Uh, the third set of bullet points here is just comparing to 2019, uh, expenses and the savings to, to prior year. Um, and you see that we're saving a little bit more, um, when you compare it to our prior year, uh, spending through June. Next slide here, this, uh, shows a little comparison of our police and fire overtime amounts, uh, and this goes, uh, full year for 2019 and then just through July, uh, for 2020. Um, this is a really, uh, interesting chart. This is expenses that we track pretty closely. Um, but you'll see that the, the two red lines are fire department, uh, dotted line being last year and solid line being 2020. Um, you can see that the fire department has, uh, as of July, reached, um, their, their number that, that they hit last year as well. Um, so we're pretty on track with the fire as to where we were last year in overtime, whereas police department, there's been a really big shift. Um, you can see the dark blue dotted line sort of in the middle there. Um, we're way, way below it this year, um, on the, on that light blue solid line. So, uh, fire overtime numbers tracking close on track, uh, with where we are, we're in 2019, whereas police, we're, we're seeing a, a very big decrease, um, from our overtime numbers from last year.
Kate, is there seasonality or anything to the police? I mean, I'm just looking at the second half of this year and seeing in 2019 how police shot way up there with overtime in October, November.
Yep, November was a really big month because there were three payrolls in that month. Uh, we have, we have two months of the year, every year there are three payroll months. And then November is also, uh, when we have a lot of Northwestern games, um, and other larger events that take place, primarily football games, uh, and related activities.
So even though we get reimbursed for their expense for the football games, we show it as a full.
Correct.
As a full expense, not the net.
Yep, yep. And you will see that with the news about Northwestern today, that, uh, we, we expect that we'll keep police overtime pretty low through the end of the year, but that is also a source where we usually get reimbursed for some of those hours. So it may be a one-for-one on a lot of those hours that we don't spend the expense, but that was an hour we would have gotten reimbursed for.
Got it.
Uh, moving forward, this is just, uh, some highlights of our, of our outstanding concerns for 2020, the, the items that we're of course watching very closely. Um, Northwestern football season being one of the biggest of those and one that we got. Um, some unconfirmed news on today, so we're, we're expecting that to be final either, you know, by the end of the night or sometime tomorrow. Um, currently, our $12 million revenue loss that Hitesh highlighted earlier in the presentation does include losing all, losing out on all athletic tax that we would expect to get from football season. So, um, we took a conservative approach to that earlier in this crisis and, um, that is, is bearing out to have been the right course of action for us to take. Um, however, of course, there will be ripple effects into our other revenue sources, uh, if the football season does not take place. Um, we've been pretty relatively conservative on many of those, given that we're assuming, um, lower use of hotels, lower sales tax revenues, um, sort of across the board through the end of the year. So we're not sure we're gonna see a major impact that we weren't already projecting as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, but it's definitely, um, an item we'll continue to, to do some analysis on and look very closely at over the next, uh, couple of days here. Uh, the fall student population, understanding how many individuals will be coming back on campus, um, how many will be, you know, using businesses downtown that will have a large impact on our revenue sources. Um, of course, any COVID-19 stronger resurgence and, and a rollback of business activities. Um, and then ongoing work from home for our downtown offices impacts, uh, many of our revenue sources, parking, parking tickets, um, sales tax as they reunite businesses, et cetera. So, um, again, we've been fairly conservative in our, in our estimate so far, but, um, if things change drastically on the COVID front, this will impact our revenues going forward as well. Going over, uh, moving now to some of our funding that we've received, uh, for our COVID-19 response. This is all of our, our grants that we've kept track of, and you've heard many of these numbers before, but just to, to put them up again, um, and show what we've got confirmed versus what we're still in the application process for. Um, so these are amounts that are all confirmed, um, allocations for the city of Evanston. Most are given on a reimbursement basis, so we have not received cash on, uh, most of these grants. Uh, so the first is our COVID-19. So the first is our COVID-19 contact tracing grant. This will be used to grow our contract tracing program through our health and services departments. You've heard a bit about that one already. The newest is the CARES Act Coronavirus Relief Funds through Cook County. This is $619,000 that we are looking, we're working on getting the expenses together to apply for that money. But that is the allocation that we've been given at this point from those funds to work up towards in our expenses that we're submitting. A few smaller amounts through the CARES Act Provider Relief Fund specifically for EMT services, a COVID-19 crisis grant that went to overtime specifically in our Health and Human Services Department. The National Association of County and City Health Officials has given the Health and Human Services Department a grant of $50,000, and this is going to be used to offset some personnel costs going forward. And then, as we discussed a few times, the CDB-GCV and ESG-CV amounts. So again, that all adds up to about 3.5, 3.6 million in confirmed funding that the city will be expecting to get through reimbursement basis.
Kate, I just, on that page where you were, I just want to do a shout out to you. And I want people in the community to know that part of recovering after something terrible like a pandemic or hurricane or whatever the disaster, flood, whatever the disaster may be, is, you know, obtaining all the federal funding that you're entitled to under these very complex federal rules. And while many people in our community know Ike Ogbo and Greg Olson and his entire Department of Public Health team, another part of this recovery is getting all of these federal funds. And Kate is our point person as a city, you know, being in charge of our cost recovery. And it's not something we all think about, but it's critically important to getting us back on our feet. And there's a lot of grants here. There's going to be more grants that come in. And just on behalf of everybody in Evanston, Kate, we really appreciate what you're doing. This is really good news for us. And I can tell you, because I have visibility around the country on this type of work, you're doing a really good job. And the city's doing well to try and get a first in to getting these funds and then to try, with many of them reimbursement, to try and get the documentation together and get these closed out as quick as possible so we can move on as the key.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate the support and, you know, shout out back to all the staff members who are working really diligently on gathering expenses, Health and Human Services writing out grant applications and all the work that's going to support. One other grant to highlight too is our Female Public Assistance Grants. So this is one that we are still sort of in the application process on, working on figuring out how much money we expect to see through this amount. So the total expenses that have been submitted are $1.1 million, $1.170,000 or $70,000. We were approved for slightly less than that in preliminary approval. And we're looking for other sources of funding through those other grants for those items that FEMA did not approve to be covered. The federal share we would expect on that amount of money is 75%, which is $828,000. And then at the moment, we're planning on covering our local share 25% using our CDB-GCV funds. With final regulations coming out today, we'll give those another look and make sure those puzzle pieces are all working together and that these funds can be used appropriately in that way. We expect to see an initial distribution of this of sort of 50% of our total, which is in the $400,000 range. That is expected soon. It's been obligated, and we are waiting for that to come through the Controller's Office system to get to the city. And then, once that is received, we can submit for final distribution after we do sort of a final expense reconciliation on these. And the expenses that were included in this application were non-congruent housing, those through hotels in the city up through the end of May, PPE purchases and the building of the temporary facility in Chandler. Moving over now to talk a little bit about the 2021 budget. So, you know, in the midst of all of this, we are still working behind the scenes diligently to start creating a 2021 budget. We are hoping to keep that on sort of its normal calendar to bring a proposed budget to you at the beginning of October, have that reviewed and have it approved by the end of the year as required. At the moment, what we're targeting as a revenue loss in the general fund is about $4 to $6 million. Looking at our current year projections, thinking that next year, hopefully, we won't have the long-term complete shutdown that we saw in March and April of this year, but that there will be ongoing effects from this pandemic. We'll see still lower income, you know, lower employment across the state that will affect our income taxes, lower sales tax revenue, as well as these other revenues like hotel tax or amusement tax, athletic tax, continue to be pretty deeply affected into next year. We may also need to make up deficit spending from 2020. So depending on how the next few months shape out, we anticipate that we may have to dip into reserves as Hitesh stated earlier in the presentation at the end of this year. And we would seek to make that up in 2020 if possible. One of the places we're looking very closely as we go into this budget process is all of our current vacancies. So holding on to all of our current vacancies into 2021 would yield approximately $4 million in savings for the general fund. This obviously will have a great impact on our city services, on our staff and our residents. So we want to make sure we're doing this, you know, consciously by looking closely at those vacancies and doing some evaluation on what those impacts will be and making sure we share those with city council too as we move forward in this process. And then finally, highlighting that there's been discussion at the city council level of the sale of certain city assets, notably the Civic Center, possibly the Church Street parking garage, just to keep that on the city council's radar as we face these pretty large revenue losses going into next year and expect to be facing a deficit budget once again.
Kate, can I just add on that last bullet? I mean, this is how I personally feel, and I know in some conversations with some aldermen that they feel similarly. I am not supportive, and I know other aldermen aren't supportive, of selling a city asset to close a budget deficit. I think it is on the table and up for, you know, thorough consideration whether you want to reallocate assets within the city. All big organizations do that all the time. And I think that's the conversation that the council's really having about assets, not sell the asset to close a budget deficit, because in that instance, it's just a one-time sort of savings as opposed to reallocating, you know, money from one asset into something else that's serving the community long term.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing that up. I'm just going to jump in for a second. I absolutely agree. If we were to consider the sale of any city-owned assets, we would need to look closely at what, as a collaborative conversation, about what we would be allocating that funding for, whether it would be to pay down debt, whether it would be to, you know, put towards another project, but it would not be to simply close a budget gap. That would just be, you know, you never want to take a long-term asset and plug a short-term hole. So not something any of us would recommend. However, it does beg the conversation of, you know, how much land, how many buildings, how many projects should the city of Evanston hold? And that's a conversation that the council can be having and will be having over the course of the next year as we look to, you know, secure our finances for the long term. We own a tremendous amount of buildings and land and other amenities. And we need to evaluate whether or not that's the most cost-effective approach. And if, you know, in light of the pandemic and the changing world and what we see to be the future of the city, if there's opportunities perhaps to consolidate services in certain buildings or to look at, you know, what makes sense overall going forward. Just from a financial perspective, it's going to be very challenged for the city for years to come. We did not come into this pandemic with a great set of circumstances. I again say that with the caveat that we got great pricing on our bonds today because Evanston is an amazing place, and there will always be a tremendous amount of interest in people wanting to live here, do business here and go to school here. So we always have really good things going for us. But at the same time, we always have to take a cautious and measured approach at how we look at our financial picture. Because there are certain areas where we've had some significant revenue losses over the past few years and now projecting that out going forward. And yet, our expenses continue to increase pretty significantly. So a conversation that we'll continue to have, it will be a public conversation, and it will be a meaningful conversation with as much participation with the public as possible so that we can get to a place where we have a better understanding of what is right-sized and what is equitable and what makes sense for us going forward.
Thank you, Erica. Go ahead, Kate.
Thank you both for your clarification and my communication of that item. And then finally, just to go over some of the planning that we're doing in terms of budget outreach this year. Obviously, in a virtual environment, we're challenged. We're limited by the amount that we can do. But we hope to be holding a series of community conversations around the budget as we did last year. These will just, of course, be held virtually on the Zoom platform. And we hope that that will be a functional and rewarding and useful way of holding these conversations this year. So scheduling for the first couple of weeks of September in the interest that we would hold these meetings and get this feedback and be able to present that to you along with the 2021 proposed budget in early October. We hope to hold meetings that will highlight a few different topics that we expect to be key to our 2021 budget planning. The first being sort of a Budget 101 overview of the city's budget and budget process. The second being specific to the impacts of COVID-19 on the budget. And the third to discuss how the city funds Health and Human Services that has gone through a lot of change in the past couple of years. We expect that to be a significant focus going forward as well. We will plan to hold a brief presentation at the start of these meetings, hold breakout questions, breakout rooms with some roundtable discussion questions, and then have a time at the end for a report out from discussions. These will be staff-led meetings. City council will be able to be present if desired and will continue to keep you informed as we move forward in planning the specifics of these meetings. And that wraps us up.
All right, we're open for questions or comments. We've got Alderman Fisk first.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kate, I have an upcoming award meeting on September 1st, and I'm just wondering if we can do just a mini-budget overview at our award meetings to encourage people to attend the larger discussions. I think that would be really helpful. There's a lot of, I think, confusion about, you know, where we stand, a lot of uncertainty. And I think people are feeling, I don't know, I'm not sure frightened is the right word, but concerned about where we're at, what, how COVID has affected us and where we're going in the future and whether they can afford to stay in Evanston. So that's what I'm hearing in my ward. So it really would be helpful to do that. The other thing I wanted to speak to was just real quickly Erica's comments. I'm sorry, the dog's barking. There's a way of looking at where we are as sort of a generational change. I mean, COVID aside, a generational change and an opportunity to look at who we are and how we do business, how many facilities we need, how many, you know, buildings we have, all of this. And I think it's a really good time, if nothing else, to have that discussion. So I want to inject something a little bit positive about this because otherwise, there's really not a whole lot that's positive about what we're all going through now. But it sort of forces us to have the conversation in the community. And I always think that's a good thing.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Brathwaite.
I'll be brief, and I don't know if I'm supporting Alderman Fisk's comments, but I think we're all looking at the world the same way with a lot of uncertainty. And I think my overall concern is for our commercial tax base. So I would hope that we will continue to look at city assets that may be attractive, Erica, to businesses that are looking to downsize or move to Evanston that would take properties that are underutilized and potentially put them back on the tax base. So I'm not afraid or I'm not shy. I'm not uncomfortable about having those conversations. And given this uncertain time, if there's a building that someone's potentially interested in, let's have that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other discussion or comments? All right, seeing done then, that wraps up our discussion on the 2020 budget update. When we get back as a council, after Labor Day, we'll start the whole budget process for the 2021 budget. Alderman Rainey, could you move for action SP3? Are you muted? You're muted. We can't hear you, Anne. We can't hear you, Anne. You're muted. You're unmuted.
I think she has a technical problem.
Oh, okay.
She does.
All right, here I go, here I go.
All right.
There you go. All right, SP3, ComEd Franchise Agreement expiration. The Commonwealth Edison Franchise Negotiation Committee recommends that the city council not enter into an agreement extension with Commonwealth Edison upon expiration of the current agreement on September 12, 2020. This is for action, and I move approval.
Second? Okay, heard a second from Alderman.
Second.
All right, and Alderman says, okay. So we're going to open this for conversation. Before we do that, how about a little background, just so the folks watching can understand as well? Erica, do you want to do that? Would you like Kumar Jensen?
Kumar is here. I think he's prepared to do that, I think.
All right, go ahead, Kumar. You've got the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, interim manager Storley, Kumar Jensen, Chief Sustainability and Resilience Officer. I'm glad to provide a little bit of background going into this conversation. And so, as Alderman Rainey mentioned, staff is bringing forward a recommendation from the Franchise Negotiation Committee that staff has vetted and supports. And so I want to provide a little bit of history about this type of agreement and why the committee and city staff are taking the stance that we are.
And who's the committee? Share with us who the committee is.
Absolutely. So the committee is made up of two aldermen, so Alderman Rainey and Alderman Revel. It's made up, it also is two community members who are members of the city's utilities commission, which is a public advisory body that is appointed by the mayor. Those two Evanston residents are Christopher Ski and Tucker Partel. And then there are also three, well, actually four staff who have been participating heavily in the conversations. And those staff are myself, Acting Assistant City Manager Kimberly Richardson, Public Work Agency Director Dave Stonebeck, and our Corporation Council Kelly Ginder. We have also have received support and continue, have continued ongoing support from the Power Bureau LLC, which is a, we have hired as an energy advisor to help us on a variety of our different energy programs this year. And one of them is the franchise negotiations. So a little bit of history about our agreements and then about why we're, sort of the moment we're in right now. So as with many communities in ComEd territory, Evanston has had a formal franchise agreement that's adopted by city council ordinance since the 1950s. The original agreement that Evanston signed was over 30 years. And many of the communities, our neighboring communities and communities in ComEd region have similarly long agreements. Evanston's a little bit unique, of course. And so in subsequent years after that first agreement expired, the city negotiated much shorter agreements, sometimes being just a few-month extensions and then into one-year agreements, three-year agreements, and then up into the five-year agreements, which is the agreement that we are discussing today. On September, in September of 2015, city council approved a five-year extension to the existing franchise agreement that is set to expire. That agreement is set to expire on September 12 of 2020. So just a little over a month from. on September 12 of 2020, so just a little over a month from today. And so, these agreements historically have been focused on infrastructure and finances. They provide ComEd with certainty and they provided the city with unbilled electricity for city facilities, or what some folks have come to call free electricity. Today, however, the city is facing many challenges, as we all know, many of them have been discussed today, and particularly as we went through the budget presentation, we talked about precipitous drop in revenue, restricted access to affordable housing, and we didn't talk as much about the impact that utilities have on that, but there's certain, utilities are certainly a larger portion of people's living expenses. And then we can't forget, although it may be easy in today's world, the accelerating climate crisis. The windstorm that we experienced today, severity of that windstorm is just another example of the type of impact that we're likely to see on an increasing basis. And so, in order to address these challenges, we really need partners that are aligned with our goals and are able to effectively support the city in responding to these. And so, bringing us up into the present day, in mid-July, ComEd entered into what's called deferred prosecution agreement that revealed crimes that were committed by ComEd staff. ComEd has, in that agreement and what's been posted publicly, has acknowledged that under attachment A of that agreement or the statement of facts, that they performed a series of actions intended to increase benefits to the company. A couple of those actions, and they use some sort of coded language, or not necessarily coded language, but they use placeholders for people's names, but ComEd has admitted to hiring a public official A's associates as vendor and subcontractors who perform the little or no work for ComEd, appointment of board member one as member of the board of directors at their request of public official A, retention of law firm A, the development and execution of an internship program. And then, ComEd has acknowledged that they reasonably sort of foresaw anticipated benefits to ComEd of such legislation and actions to exceed $150 million to ComEd's benefit. And so, as a result of this deferred prosecution agreement, ComEd has agreed to pay a $200 million fine and cooperate with future investigations. All of these actions, though, in the legislation that was passed between 2011 and 2019 that were affected by the actions of ComEd, have impacted Evanston ratepayers and customers. And it remains to be seen how significant those impacts are and what those will end up looking like. And so, if the city is going to continue to work in partnership with ComEd, we believe that we need to have a better understanding of what the implications of those activities are. And so, today, as is laid out in the memo, the franchise negotiation committee and city staff are asking city council to allow the agreement to lapse. And so, we're asking city council to not direct the city manager to negotiate an extension at this time. If the agreement is to lapse, the committee will continue negotiations and conversations with ComEd in the hopes that a future agreement will fully align with the city's ambitious goals around equity and workforce development, affordable housing, stabilizing our finances and climate action. And we also hope that it will give us additional time to understand what the ramifications and the impact has been to Evanston customers from these actions. And the thing that I want to end on, and then I'm glad to answer questions, and we do have Mark Pruitt of the Power Bureau available to help answer and Kelly Gander, our corporation counsel, to help answer questions I may not be able to. But in making this recommendation, the committee and city staff were primarily concerned with any perceived or actual potential impact on reliability and service to Evanston residents and accounts. We did not want to take, recommend an action that we thought would have any negative impact on the service and reliability that ratepayers in Evanston enjoy through their electric utility. And so, it's our conclusion that the absence of a franchise agreement does not alter ComEd's obligation to provide services to Evanston businesses and residential customers. The Public Utilities Act requires that all utilities regulated by the Illinois Commerce Commission must deliver equitable treatment to all customers, and so that means they cannot provide a differential service in terms of reliability to Evanston customers, whether or not we have a franchise agreement or not. And then, some of the other changes that we would expect to see with, if we do, if the council moves forward without having an agreement in place, is that ComEd already is required to take out permits for the work that they do in Evanston, and so we would begin to charge ComEd for the permitted work that they would be doing in Evanston. Scheduling for emergencies would remain the same. ComEd, just as we had an emergency today, those operations and that response would be unaltered. ComEd would still continue to maintain and respond to emergencies as they have been. And then the last item is one that was approved on the consent agenda, which is the conversation around the free or the unbilled electricity. And so, the city is replacing that free service through ordinance with a fee called the infrastructure maintenance fee, which transitions from receiving free or unbilled electricity to receiving a monthly cash payment from ComEd. And one of the many benefits of that transition is that it allows the city to go out and purchase electricity for all of those facilities at a much more competitive rate than we would receive from ComEd. And so, we are actually anticipating that the city will see a bump in revenue to the tune of between $70,000 and $90,000 moving into 2021 if that ordinance is approved. And so, that is the background and sort of what has brought us to this moment and to this particular recommendation. And the last item that I will add is that thus far, there have been at least three class-action lawsuits that have been filed against ComEd in relation to the revelation of the charges that have been brought against ComEd. So, I'd be glad to open it up for questions, defer to corporation counsel Gander, if there's anything she would like to add prior to discussion.
I think you covered everything, Kumar.
All right. Any conversation or questions from the council? All right, seeing none, this was for action this evening. It was moved in second. City clerk, could you please take the role on SP3?
Before we vote, let's just clarify because it's a negative. So, are we, a yes vote means we are declining to renew?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure everybody knew that, so.
Thank you for that clarification, though. All right, city clerk, could you take the role, please, on SP3?
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Wait, you want to do no, right?
No. If you do, a yes vote is a vote to let it expire.
Oh, shit.
Not to enter into an agreement.
Right.
That's what we want to do, right?
Right.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Thank you for the point of clarification. Aye.
Alderman Winn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Reese Simmons.
Aye.
I'm sorry, is Alderman suffering? Is he just out for the rest of the meeting? Is that the presumption? Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
And Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
All right, SP3, the ComEd franchise agreement expiration. The council passes allowing this agreement to expire on a seven-to-zero vote. We are now, we have completed the special orders of business, we did the consent agenda at the beginning of this meeting, so we're now going to move to call of the wards, and I'm going to start with Alderman Fisk this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the good conversation tonight. I think we covered a lot and it was extremely helpful. I want to just pass along my condolences to the family of Madeline Decree. I will really miss her at human services. I really enjoyed her comments and just her personality. I'm sorry that we won't see her there anymore. I want to remind everyone that there is a first ward meeting on Tuesday, September 1st. We were going to try to have it outdoors a little bit earlier, but I think probably we will have a Zoom meeting, but we'll make the final decision about that in probably a week. And that's pretty much all I have to say, so everyone, please be safe.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also like to join Alderman Fisk, yourself and others, in a word of prayer and sending my condolences, especially to the family of Madeline Decree. She was an incredible advocate in our community, and her voice will be missed, and I would be remiss if I didn't share, and she was equal opportunity. I mean, she came after everybody. She didn't discriminate, but we'll definitely miss her voice at council meetings, human services, and again, keeping she and her family in prayer. This Thursday, 6 o'clock, we'll be hosting a second ward meeting, hosting the young leaders to discuss defunding and helping to define what that means in our Evanston community, so encouraging all of our second ward residents to come out and participate in that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Winn.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Alderman Fisk. This has been a very good discussion tonight, and I also want to offer my condolences to the family of Madeline Decree. I thought of her as a poet. She was so powerful in the way that she spoke to all of us, and you're right, Alderman Braithwaite, none of us were spared, and I appreciate so much of what she said to us and the powers with which she expressed herself. So, and so the only other thing I would like to bring attention to again is that we are eight days away from the centennial of women's suffrage, and I think about Madeline Decree and all of the rest of the members of the city council who would not be sitting there if we had, if that had not happened. And it's also surprising to me that it's both been such a long time and in so many ways, such a short time. And I always think of my grandmother, Rita Beatrice Winn, who had just turned 21 and was able to vote for Warren Harding. She cast her first vote. She really regretted it later in life and came around to being a victim of that. But so, cheers to all the women, and I recognize fully that not all women achieved that vote 100 years ago and that many had to wait another 40 years. But I do salute all my fellow women council members and all of the women who have put us here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Winn. Alderman Wilson.
Also, I do want to express my condolences to the friends and family of Madeline Decree. I'm going to miss the conversations. She was just a very, everybody's kind of already expressed this, but a very powerful voice and, you know, cared a lot about the community, and, you know, I always appreciated her input. One thing I kind of wanted to just touch on a little bit, as schools are going to be doing what they can to provide education to our children in our community, and this is a very challenging time for them, so let's be mindful of what the schools, kids and the families are going through, and let's all do whatever we can to either partner, support, or do what we can to make this next phase for them as uncomfortable as possible. So, they're going to need a lot of backup and support, so let's do what we can now. Next.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Reese Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor Hagerty. Like everyone else, I want to send prayers and my condolences to the family and the loved ones of Ms. Decree. I believe her voice here at city council strengthened all of our leadership as she pushed and challenged us, and I have already missed her input and public comment and her thoughtful way of challenging us as she represented and fought for the neighborhood. So, prayers to the family. I want to thank our residents that have given tips, anonymous tips, have used text a tip and worked with our police officers to support our fantastic police department and the work that they've done to arrest, and charges have been brought for those that... There has been an arrest for the recent murder of our neighbor, Andrew Williams. So, I want to thank Chief Cook and the community for working together to get that done and Prayers for the families of all the victims in the community. Say a very happy birthday to Ms. Louise Sutton Strong. She celebrated 101-year birthday, and she's our neighbor.
Oh, wow.
Longtime resident and a member of the community that has four generations, possibly five, four I know of. One of them is our 311 manager here at the city Evanston. But happy birthday to Louise Sutton Strong and the family that have enjoyed your birthday over the last few days. And then just a thank you to all the leaders in Evanston, those that don't necessarily have a title, but we've just been doing a great job as residents, taking ownership and doing what we can. Shout out to Tasha Wilson from our police department for what she's doing for black businesses. Shout out to Lashandra for her representation with the Confederate flag issue. Chef Q recently was in a publication for all that she's done to serve the community that is hungry. So, just thank you to the residents, those that don't even go recognize for what you're doing. You're really appreciated because it's really all hands on deck needed for the times that we're in right now. We will also have a fifth ward meeting on this Wednesday. We'll have updates from the meeting that we had with Chief Cook and other leaders in response to the violence a few weekends ago, so please do join us. It will be on Zoom, 7:00 PM. A newsletter should go out sometime midday tomorrow. Thank you.
And thank you, Alderman Reese Simmons. Alderman suffered and was having technical issues because of the storm, so we're going to move to Alderman Revelle.
Well, I want to join my colleagues in expressing my condolences to the family of Madeline Decree. He really kept us on our toes when she come to speak to us at human services in particular and at city council, and certainly will miss her voice and her presence. I appreciate Mayor Hagerty, your issuing a proclamation for the anniversary of the passage of the 19th Amendment. As a longtime member of the League of Women Voters, I've been a pretty passionate follower of the history of women's suffrage and obviously proponent of encouraged everybody to get informed and turn out to vote. Obviously, there's a, I think, voting rights are a really big concern at the moment, not, maybe not here in Evanston, but around the country, and so I think unfortunately, our work is not finished in that regard. And then finally, I just want to mention that the human services committee has begun discussions about the possibility of an alternative emergency response system or some kind of changes in the way we handle our, some of our 911 calls. We're going to be discussing, continuing that conversation for the next three Mondays in August, so August 17th, 24th, and 31st, and certainly encourage the community to listen in and share, share your comments and your thoughts with us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Revelle. Alderman Rainey.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to follow up with Alderman Simmons and thank the chief and the neighbors and especially Alderman Simmons and all the work that went in and also NORTEF people for the successful arrests of three people in the Mr. Williams case. Those arrests were really swift and really brought a conclusion to that case. Hopefully, the other two will have some good news soon. Mitzi Gibbs, I'm so sorry... Mitzi Gibbs, I'm so sorry about your mother. I really liked her, and we had some very interesting conversations. She will definitely be missed. I want to tell you that there's a renamed group, west of Dodge, north of Howard Street. The name of the group was Swear, it is now called Sweet, which I think is just great. It's southwest Evanston, neighbors east of the Target, so it's sweet. And we had a great Zoom meeting the other night, and I really appreciated everybody taking time out, and, you know, an hour meeting turned into a little bit longer, but I got to meet a lot of new people over there, and it was, it was a really good meeting. I want everybody to keep, I can't tell all the details, but I want everybody to keep their eye on Dodge School, especially the wall that faces Oakton. It's going to be a very exciting revelation very soon. And also to announce that among a million other great things in the Grade 8 Ward, the Grade 8 Ward now has a Starbucks. Stop in at the first floor of the lobby, right when you come in from the parking garage, the old, the former gift shop is now a Starbucks. So everybody should stop in and get your morning coffee and your afternoon coffee and your evening coffee at Starbucks at St. Francis Hospital. Thank you. Nice meeting, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Thank you, everybody, for your comments at Call of the Wards. We're now going to move...
Mr. Mayor, can I make one, two comments as well, very quickly, regarding Ms. Ducree? And I just also want to add my voice to everyone who sent their condolences to Ms. Ducree's family. You know, one of the things that I remember Ms. Ducree most, one of the lessons that I think she espoused a lot recently was, you know, she used the metaphor of crabs in a bucket. And I really think, you know, what she was expressing there is that we have to make sure that we're always working together and that we're not doing things to hold ourselves or our communities down. So that's, I think, a really great lesson to take away, that spirit of togetherness. And then lastly, I do just want to, you know, announce that the Corks Office is holding an event. I forgot that we will not have a council meeting for the remainder of August, so I do want to make this announcement now. We'll be having an event regarding reparations, and we're focusing on women in leading that role. So we'll have, you know, we'll have alderwoman Robyn Russ Simmons on the panel, we'll have actress and scholar Amanda Seals, we'll have Bodoja Ayentoro, who is an attorney with Cobra, and then we'll also have Mr. Joey Mogul, who is an attorney who wrote the reparations bill for Chicago, the birch reparations bill. And so that'll take place August 18th from 7:00 to 8:30 PM Central Standard Time. It'll be on our Facebook Live. Folks can find out more information about that. Our goal of this event is to have an informative, yet entertaining conversation about reparations, and particularly, you know, women of color leading that movement around the nation.
Thank you, thank you, clerk. Thank you, clerk Ducree. Alderman Wilson, can you lead us into executive session?
Yes, pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding collective bargaining, litigation, and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in an executive session and are a new way of exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. The exceptions are five ILCS 120/2A, C2, C11, and C21.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, city clerk, could you please take the role?
Yes, Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite. Oh, Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Russ Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferden, I'm sorry, Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
All right, so on a, I didn't hear Alderman Braithwaite.
I didn't catch him.
I'm sorry, aye.
He's an aye. Okay, so on a seven to zero vote, the Evanston city council is going to recess into executive session. Thank you, everyone, for coming out for the meeting. This meeting is recessed into executive session.